Good evening and welcome. I would like to call to order the Joint Budget Work Session between the Town Council and the Board of Education for Monday, March 24th at 7:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Delnecki?
Here.
Chair Estman?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Syracusea?
Present.
Vice Chair Prohano? Board Member Kimber? Counselor Carey? Secretary Zimmerman? Counselor King? Board Member Manili? Counselor Balboni? Board Member Marks? Counselor Fitzgerald? Board Member Kalia? Counselor Lewis? Board Member Corsi? Counselor Pendleton?
Present.
Board Member Mackey? Counselor Bugansky? Thank you, and moving on to Item Three, Public Input. Per the council rules, this segment of the meeting shall not exceed 30 minutes unless extended by the Chair with the consent of the majority of the council present. Is there anyone who would like to come forward to speak at this time? Is there anyone? No? Okay. No one from the public? Moving on to Item Four, which is the Board of Education Proposed Budget for Fiscal Year 2025, and I would like to turn it over to Superintendent Carter at this time.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. There have been a variety of informal conversations about potential cuts to the Board of Education budget. I have done a great deal of thinking on this matter, and as this is the first opportunity for me to speak to all decision-makers at the same time, I will share my high-level thoughts. I have previously stated that the 5.97% increase is right on the line of crossing over from a responsible budget to an irresponsible budget. As a lower percentage increase would simply defer too many costs to the FY '27 budget. We have already deferred $1.3 million in requested staffing to next year's budget. Essentially, the 5.97% increase already kicks the can down the road. If the decision is made to cut the Board of Education's budget, it may be useful to consider two categories of reductions that I have been thinking about: fiscally irresponsible cuts and educationally irresponsible cuts. To be clear, I am not suggesting that decision-makers have to decide which category to choose. A more accurate characterization is that decision-makers will need to decide in what order these cuts occur, because if we keep deferring costs, we will be on a trajectory that ensures both categories of reductions will eventually be needed. The fiscally irresponsible cuts would be painless and invisible to stakeholders, including students, families, staff, and taxpayers, but that just masks the problem and creates funding cliffs that future leaders and taxpayers will have to confront. In contrast, the educationally irresponsible cuts would be very visible and immediately impact students, families, and staff. Here are some examples from each category. The invisible cuts could include skipping a pension contribution this budget cycle, lowering the threshold of our healthcare reserve, or depleting our special education reserve account. None of these are fiscally sound ideas, but they would temporarily stave off the types of cuts that will negatively impact students in programming. Those types of cuts could include eliminated programs that are not mandated, such as eliminating sports, music, elementary world language, or the K-5 STEM program. We all know that these types of cuts will fill the town hall and bring out parents, students, educators, and advocates of public education. There are those who will characterize those cuts as scare tactics, and it is a common strategy that has been used for decades by many communities across the state in order to garner support for education budgets. In my 15 years, I have never employed this strategy. It would be disingenuous to forecast painful cuts that are avoidable. However, I worry that my aversion to unnecessary drama and my understated style of communication can belie the seriousness of the situation we are facing. So if we get to the point when we are talking about sports or music or STEM, it will not be a scare tactic. It will mean that we are running out of options. I share all of this because if this budget is cut, it will be my responsibility to make recommendations to the Board of Education regarding possible reductions and to identify the consequences of such reductions. I hope the transparency with which I have identified possible ways to cut has been helpful context for all decision-makers. And while the word transparency is ubiquitous when talking about local government, I would like to focus on an equally important word that we hear less often, and that is honesty. It is imperative that we are honest with the taxpayer about the effect of deferring costs. It is not in the school systems nor the taxpayers' best interests to artificially suppress the budget increase and mask the impact of increasing enrollment. If we fail to keep pace with the cost of increasing enrollment along with unfunded mandates and contractual obligations, we are simply setting up the taxpayer for a future spike as opposed to incremental increases. In previous presentations, I have shared two data points that are essential when contemplating education funding. First, we know from data provided by the state that 142 towns in Connecticut spend more per pupil than South Windsor. Clearly, this demonstrates that we do not have a spending problem, we have an enrollment problem. The other data point demonstrates that after analyzing the 20 other DURG V towns, that the Board of Education's percentage of the overall town budget is consistent with other towns. In fact, it is slightly below other school districts. Thus, the argument cannot be made that the Board of Education's slice of the pie is too big, and yet, the argument cannot be made that the town's slice is too big, as many would agree that the town side has been underfunded. Perhaps we have to consider that the whole pie is just too small to support the overall needs of our growing community. In closing, we have an amazing school district, as evidenced by the number of families flocking to our community for the schools. We currently offer an outstanding education to our students and families. My message tonight is that we must be fiscally responsible and forward-thinking if we want to keep it that way. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. Before we begin with questions, I'd like to inform the public that the budget book is available on the Board of Education website. Please visit south windsorschools.org, click on the Boards of Education tab, and select Budget Information. It's the fourth bullet down on the left for all the fiscal year 2026 documents. I will now open up to questions for Dr. Carter from the board members and counselors. When you ask your question, please mention the page number in the budget book that you are referring to. Is there anyone who has a question for Dr. Carter? Counselor Bugansky?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Much louder than council chambers, so you're going to have to forgive me. First off, let me start by acknowledging the excellent educational environment we have here in town and continue to provide to our students. My wife and I moved the kids here nearly 25 years ago for the education system primarily, and we're pleased that it has only continued to improve, that is in testament to Dr. Carter, her administrative staff, and of course, the teachers and everybody else. So thank you for that. Please recognize that our questions and our poking through of the budget is in no way meant to run counter to or diminish that success, it is simply a matter of economics. To that end, I encourage the Board to adopt a transparent, more transparent approach to the budgeting process. This will help create an appreciation of the pieces that go into building that budget and why the asks from you are what they are from the community. Providing detailed breakdowns of the proposed budget and actively seeking input from the community will help foster trust and ensure that resources are being spent wisely. If there are areas where efficiencies can be gained, I hope the Board will actively seek those opportunities and explain how these changes will not negatively affect students' educational experiences. I have to stress, we're not looking to cut the budget in any way, we are just looking to level-set the amount of the increase year over year to better manage the financial impact on our residents. If money were no object, I'm sure we'd be happy to approve a wish list level budget, however, money is an object, and these are tight and trying economic times. Ultimately, our goal should be to ensure that every child receives a high-quality education while being fiscally responsible to the families and community members who support our schools. I believe that through careful planning, transparency, and collaboration, we can achieve this balance. And I want to point out that, you know, in just the past 12 months, there have been a number of communities around the state that have made serious pushbacks on their local BOE budget requests citing, you know, financial burdens on communities. We're talking right down to the Gold Coast of Connecticut, so everyone is starting to feel the economic pinch of budgets, and, you know, no one is getting pay increases that mirror the increases that our tax burdens continue to go up year over year, and then, of course, you factor in the increased cost of consumables and everything else, and just it continues to pile on. And of course, some of our residents are, you know, fixed income, they're retirees, and their budgets don't go up every year, they don't get that increase. So I just wanted to, I wanted to put that out there, I wanted to compliment you, of course, on the excellent status of the system here in town, and is what makes it so, you know, apparent that people still want to move here. I'll just, a couple of questions that I just wanted some clarification on more than anything. You know, and again, I think I also want to kind of level-set that we understand that, you know, this is your budget, you will do with it as you see a need to. So we're not looking to try to point anything, poke holes, whatever. On Page Four, the contractual salary of 3.33 million. Just wanted a little clarification on that. My rough math calculated a little over 2 million-ish on the actual contractual increase. Does that sound about right? I'm just wondering if that's right, if my math is wrong, if it is where that million dollars comes from.
Could you tell me a little bit more about the calculation?
Well, I was just trying to make a, again, very broad level, just trying to look at what the salaries were versus the 3% increase and just sort of backed into a number.
I guess I'm unsure of the question. The, that bullet, the 3.30 million, is both the contractual increases that are negotiated with our unions and those kinds of things, and it does include some benefit increases that we did separate out medical and dental, but there are other kinds of benefits that I think Chris could give some examples of that would be included in that besides...
And that's all I'm, I'm just looking...
Yep. Besides salaries.
Yeah, just sort of expand that.
Sure.
One of the things that's coming to mind right now, and I'd have to look at our staffing chart book, is, for example, if we increase substitutes because we are, that cost is going up, that's a place that that would show. So yes, there would be some substitute increase in that line. Certainly what you said, any other kind of increases. Oh, you know what else it is? It's also the FICA and Medicare, so that will go up based on staffing as well, things like that.
Yeah, okay. And again, that, completely understandable, just wanted to sort of expand the field and understand what was baked in there. And then, you mentioned the medical and dental insurance. I'm just, I'm curious, the almost $800,000 increase, is that actuarially projected? And just to tie in to the, on the budget book on Page 72, like, it's, the entire medical dental insurance budget proposal is 11.8 million. I just want to make sure that those are actuarially derived numbers.
So, so they're not, they're not actuarially derived, but they are derived with our Lockton, who is our insurance consultant, which is the same as the town, and they have a process through their agents and through their, I'm not sure if underwriter is the right term, but they have a process and professionals who do go over those numbers. We do look at them multiple times over the year before that we come to a conclusion where we are going to put that number in the budget. So what you're seeing there, that number for medical and dental, that 11.7 million, that's actually the net of what is expected for claims next year. That is, that number itself is reduced by the deductions we would be taking from employee pay and things of that nature. So that, that number is reduced, but it is a projection of what our professionals are telling us would be our claims experience for next year, based on the, I believe it's, I believe they look at 18-months trend prior to...
So that's not, that's not premium, that's actually your projected claims expense for the next 12 months?
Correct. As we are self-funded, it's, it's all, we pay for every individual claim.
Okay, all right. And then, one last thing, if I may. On Page 14, Staffing, and this is just, again, a kind of a point of clarification. Just looking at the growth, I noticed that there were about seven full-time staff, one certified and six non-certified, that came in that weren't baked into the original budget request from the prior year. So just, again, doing, you know, some rough math, you know, 50,000 per person plus benefits and taxes and all that stuff, that's the half a million dollars of funding that came from somewhere, and there was a little bit of leftover money at the end of the budget year. So I guess just help me understand how, you know, that's like three-quarters of a million dollars potentially, how does that not have a material impact on programs on an existing budget?
So I'll let Chris join in with some more detail, but big picture, every year when we build this budget, starting back in October, we have to try to predict what our staffing needs will be. And sometimes, when we're flat and not having increasing enrollment, it's a little bit easier to do that, but we will, over the summer, if it turns out that, for example, a third grade that we had intended to have five sections now has six. So we have to have the sixth section, we have to find the money in the budget. I've talked before with previous councils that that is one of the reasons why we try to have a nimble budget, because it's not fixed costs, it's not widgets that we create, we have to respond to students that move in who may have special education costs, may require a one-to-one nurse, may require, we may require more staffing in special education. So it's not unusual that each summer, the Board will get a memo from me telling them, "Okay, this is what we predicted, but we needed to add X, Y, and Z because of move-ins or a change in enrollment, or we were really close." We try not to, we're conservative when we add a section in the proposed budget, but sometimes that being conservative means that we were short a person. So we try not to overinflate it unnecessarily, but there are times when that third grade, you know, three kids moved in above and beyond the projection, and that happened to tip that section. So it's not unusual for there to be increases and changes. Typically, bigger changes are often related to unknown students with special education services that may require a paraprofessional. We may have an idea in October for the following year, how many paraprofessionals we will need. A student could move in already with an IEP that determines that he or she is required to have a paraprofessional. That would be another FTE or another staffing member. So it is true that we have to be responsive and be nimble to these changes, and they happen every year.
No, and I don't disagree with any of that, and I'm sure that if, you know, again, if more families move in, puts the numbers out of balance. I guess, I'm just looking for more, you know, to say that in the current budget, if we reduce some of the ask, there's going to be, you know, impacts, but over here, we found the room to hire additional staff, and we didn't have to, we didn't have to cut future payments, we didn't have to cut other programs already on an, already existing budget. I guess that's where I'm just kind of looking to see how that, how that comes together.
So certainly, I would agree that a half million dollars is a lot of money, but also in the context of a $100 million budget percentage-wise. It sounds bigger when we all say half a million out loud, but when we look at the...
I won't argue with you there.
With the $100 million budget, it is a certain percentage. I want to make sure I'm not missing something obvious, Chris, in my response, but, no. I would say, the things that we have, there are things that we can't control that we have to respond to, that you're fully aware of, whether it's additional classroom teachers or special education. Things that we can defer, for example, might be in our building and sites. So let's say we had planned to have, I don't know, a $200,000 expenditure on building and sites because of some facility's need, but could we go another year without that? We may have to make that calculation in the middle of the year that says, "Ooh, that project has to be postponed because student X, Y, or Z has moved into the district." So there's places where we have more flexibility. That might be building and sites, it might be facilities, it might even be some IT, but then, when it comes to staffing, and particularly special education, that's where we have less control.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Anyone else have questions for Dr. Carter? Counselor Carey?
Okay, so going along with what Mike said, you know, Dr. Carter, your team, and the Board of Ed, I think you guys, thank you for what you do. You've done a phenomenal job. I've been doing some research on South Windsor School Districts, and, you know, South Windsor is recognized as an A to A-plus school district, depending on who you look at. According to NICH, South Windsor is number 480 out of 10,561 school districts across the country, which is really good. I mean, you might think 480, but I mean, 10,000 school districts, that, to even get in that top 1,000 list is a good thing. We're number 20 out of 120 school districts in Connecticut. I thought there was 166, but I guess they only, you know, evaluated 120. But we're number six of 31 in Hartford, right behind Glastonbury, Avon, Farmington, West Hartford, and Simsbury. So, you know, when I first moved up here 25, 26 years ago, Knowington was in that number, and South Windsor was not in that group. So, I mean, South Windsor has definitely moved into the higher echelon of education, and I think that's because of all that you guys have done, so thank you very much. Great job. U.S. News ranks us, the high school, as 23 in Connecticut, so really nice job. So the schools have gotten to the top, and, you know, but we need to refine those schools by managing our budget in a way that does not make, does not negatively impact the residents of South Windsor. And last year, when your budget came in, as you know, we reduced it by 77,000, you did have some money left over at the end of the year, so for all intents and purposes, it was a net zero, you got everything you asked for. And it was a 7% plus increase, you know, but you needed it, we walked through everything, I asked a million and one questions, you know, down to $5 here and there, so we promise not to do that this year, Dr. Carter and Chris. But this year, but we also asked last year the town to have a 0% increase, and I think that the town pretty much came in at 0.9%. And we did a little finagling financially, and we were able to keep residents' taxes about 4%, and we were happy about that. But the residents still are, you know, stretched, and if you look at what a house that is assessed at $350,000 is paying in taxes, and this is rough, I'm not trying to be exact here, they're paying like a little over $12,000 a year, so $1,000 a month is going in taxes. And so I think we need to do two things in this budget year. One, we can't ask the town to be at zero. Right now, we haven't finished reviewing their budget, but their budget is coming in at 2.02, and every single department is telling us what they're cutting. And it will affect all of us. It will affect the schools. One of the things that got cut the other night was they told us they're cutting three part-timers that cut the grass. Well, we have fields, we have schools, we have open space, right? We have all this stuff. I think we cannot push that budget too much below what it's coming in. You know, I know you guys are concerned about the police, we have not heard from them yet, but, you know, I know that they're concerned, that they're just being cut to the raw. But we also can't, you know, we all know that contracts, you just put through contracts, the town just put through contracts, raises about 3%. Okay? So if raises are 3% and inflation is about 2.8, 3%, for us to ask our tax, our residents to pay 5%, we're pushing them backward, and we're pushing them backward at a time when they just can't afford it. You know, eggs are $8, you know, a box, you know, everything is up. And I think that we have to control this budget a little bit this year because the residents need it to do it, the town needs us to do it, and really, the school board too, because if we don't control it, we're going to drive people out. And the people we're going to drive out are going to be the people who don't have children. And that will just add to your problem, you know, because more people. So we are targeting to reduce the budget, you know, this year. I have some questions, but actually, Mike asked a lot of them, so I don't have to ask all of them. But, you know, I, this is, you know, kind of why. You know, it's not because we don't think you're doing a wonderful job, it's not because the schools aren't wonderful, they are, they're A-plus. But as you know, once you get to A-plus, it costs more and more to get A-plus-plus, right, or to get, if you're at six and you want to be at three. And so some of that, we're going to have to temper maybe a little bit, just for a couple of years while we get out of this mess. I keep telling everybody, look to 2031, okay? Things will get better, but we're going to have some rough going the other way. So I did have a couple of questions. Chris, I try not to get too penny-wise, you know how I am. Pension contributions, they say they are going up 22.1%, and this is on Page 72.
Counselor Carey, while Chris is turning to Page 72, I just would like to say that, just to my colleagues on the town side, I wholeheartedly agree. Often, I've wanted to be an advocate for the town departments as well, because I do think they've historically been underfunded. So I concur with that, which is why I made the statement I made in my opening statement, which is, I do think they've been underfunded, and, but it's not, I think sometimes there's a misconception that it's because our slice of the pie is unusually big, and as you know, we did the research, and it's not, but I just, I guess I want to put a shout-out to my town departments, that I concur, that they need to be funded, and zeros are not realistic when you add in contractual obligations and the rising costs that affect those departments. So please know that we are, you're preaching to the choir on that one. I believe Chris is on the page, so we'll hear your question.
So is the question, the question is just the, what is the increase?
Well, it says that it's 22.1%. I was just trying to understand why.
Sure. So that number is partly because of the increase in staff, as was mentioned before. So as people become eligible, they become eligible, and not for the pension that, you know, we sat, we sat on the pension meeting, pension committee. So there is that town-based pension, but after that, there's another thing which, in our budget book, we just still consider pension, it's not the same pension plan, it's actually a defined contribution as opposed to a defined benefit plan, but it still does get captured in that line. So as that becomes, as staff becomes eligible for that, they do get added to that plan, and there is a matching component as the contribution, in relation to the contribution.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Can I just add about pension, too? Just, you heard me allude to, one of the options that the Board could consider is reducing 350,000 that we have in the proposed budget to make that pension contribution. And the reason I'm suggesting that is that we have been really good stewards, and I know that you know this from being on the committee, that we have maintained and been good stewards, and that it's well-funded, and if we were to skip a payment and reduce that 350, we would still be in good stead. So that's an example of a cut that nobody would feel, wouldn't hurt programs, wouldn't hurt teachers, it would contribute to the very thing you just described that you're trying to achieve. But my point is that that's not the kind of solution that can be sustained, you know, year after year. I've never recommended that we don't make a pension contribution, any of my prior budgets, but, to your point, if push comes to shove, could we do that in this particular budget at this time, based on our level of... at this time, based on our level of funding? The answer is yes. So, just in light of, we're talking about pension, I just wanted to give a little more flavor to that.
Thank you. So, and some of these may sound silly, Chris, I just wasn't sure. There's a category same page, 72, status change. And it was like 60,000, and it was zero last year, and now it's 157,000? I'm not sure I, I read this, what it said, but I apologize. It just didn't make sense to me, so, like, I didn't fully understand it.
So, that account is a, an account for teachers. So, if they're going from a bachelor's degree to a master's degree, that within the year, they are eligible to go from the bachelor lane to the master's lane. And over the years, that account has been underfunded. And so, in the next budget, we increased it to an amount that we think is reasonable. We also, the Human Resources Department does a survey every year and asks staff if they believe that they will be graduating with a degree, a degree the next year, and that's also part of that calculation.
Okay, thank you. You already answered the substitutes, I won't ask that one. That one, I already answered. So, that, this last one, and I realize this is asking for your crystal ball, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Last year, at the end of the year, you had some funds, and, you know, so you were able to, even though the 77,000 we reduced, you know, you were able to fill that in with the funds left over at the end of the year and some other things that were in need. As you're looking at your budget now, do you see that you think you're going to end the year with money left and that it could be used for some of these things?
So, right now, so tomorrow night, I'll be presenting our third budget status report for the year. And as of this moment, I don't, well, a little preview of tomorrow night. I'm going to be telling the, I'm going to be telling the board that we do have about $100,000 right now that has surfaced. However, with the school district and so many things happening between now and the end of the year, it's, it's pretty hard to determine that right now. So, there have been years where I have seen that we've had unallocated funds at this time. Right now, I'm not seeing that. I can, you know, barring anything going wrong, you know, the winter season is over. I would imagine that will be on the plus side. But I don't know how much that will be as of yet.
Okay, thank you. And that's all I had.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Thank you, Mayor Donicki. Probably a good opportunity just to, just to make a couple of comments. Again, probably more for the audience than I think the council and the board are aware. Obviously, we're in a unique situation, being one of the fastest-growing school districts in the state. Also, as we've tried to explain at various board meetings, pretty much everything that's in this budget is kind of just going the way we're going. We're not adding anything new. There is no new programming of any, of any real amount. There's no academic rigor that we've added. If we were having this discussion five, six years ago, it would have been a completely different story. But I think people just need to keep that in mind. You know, we are very, we are not like too many other school districts in the state. The other thing is, and this isn't necessarily a bad thing, but I think just for informational purposes, I think as virtually everybody's aware, there was a meeting last week of some members of the council, some members of the board, and the superintendent. And my understanding, since I wasn't there, was what came out of that was, you know, some, some attempt to potentially reduce our budget from 597 to 4.5 percent. That would have resulted in a loss of like over $1.3 million from the board. And that would have gotten the town to like a net tax increase of 399. I'm not sure if that's still the goal, but that was my understanding. So, today, just for informational purposes, I asked the town manager, and I really do appreciate, Mike, the quick response. Just, just to put in perspective, we're talking about potential cuts. And I think it, obviously, it sounds better to the public. You know, a 4 percent tax increase sounds better than a 5 percent, sounds better than a 6. None of us here want to pay more in taxes, so I totally understand that, especially somebody who's retired, as I am. But I think sometimes it's good to offer some perspective. And I'm reading this because I want to make sure I get it right. If we, if you were to cut the overall budget, not just the board, but the overall town budget by $1 million, the same thing, if you wanted to add, I think that's less likely, even though I agree with Dr. Carter, that we can fully defend our budget. And I also have some concerns with some of the cuts on the town side as somebody who uses facilities in our town. But a million-dollar increase or decrease for the $350,000 assessed home, which the town manager uses as the example, equates to $100 extra a year. Now, that's an additional $100, all right? But it's $100 for each million. Now, what's $100? If I did my math correctly, it's 25 to 30 cents a day. Now, I understand at some point you have to say enough. I get that. But when we talk about potential cuts and what might be cut from the board or things that haven't been added to the town, I think perspective is important. $1 million equals $100 a year to that taxpayer. And again, it's way less than a dollar a day. And I think Dr. Carter did a great job, I think, today at the beginning of the meeting. But I hope everybody heard her. I think she was pretty clear. There's no cuts to our budget of a substantial nature that won't have an effect. We're either taking away from reserves, which hurts us in the future, or we're cutting programs right now, which hurts students and staff now. I'm not talking about a couple of dollars, but the proposed, potentially proposed $1.3 million is not just a few dollars. That's a substantial cut. And I don't want anybody listening today, or anybody leaving this room today, thinking that, you know, they can just find it, it has no effect at all. I mean, I think Dr. Carter was clear. And, you know, I think that's just good to add a little perspective at this point in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. Counselor Lewis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When you, Chris, when you had mentioned the money set aside for the increases of when someone's got a bachelor's, I think, two masters, that pay increase is part of contractual agreement, is it not?
Yes.
That's just all that. Thank you.
Counselor Balboni?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I didn't have as much time to prepare. I've had an awful lot going on. So, I don't have too many nice things to say to butter you up first. But these are some very pretty pictures in here. I really do enjoy looking at all those. So, I know we had tried to focus, and I talked about last time, about the state mandates. And this time, I'm going to focus much more importantly on federal and make sure that we're complying with all of that and that we don't lose any sort of federal funding by not doing so. So, I noticed, number one, you're, oh, sorry, page 12. I know this was done in October, you said. So, I understand that probably hasn't, just hasn't been, you know, whited out or whatnot from here. But our Director of Exclusion and Indoctrination, I'm sorry, Director of Equity and Inclusion is still in there? I'm assuming that he is being let go, or has been let go as of January 21st?
No. And we've gotten guidance from the state that that is not the intention of the federal orders. And that's from the State Department of Education. I will say, in that position, I was anticipating the question. And I think that that position might not be well-understood. And in light of, to your point, there's been a lot of national dialogue. And those words have, have become, I think, indicative of maybe some misunderstanding of what it means locally. I can't speak to what it means federally and what, what they're making changes. But for, for our purposes, I can just share some examples in case you're wondering, like, what is that position? And it, it may not be what people think. And let me just say, right out of the gate, we've obviously had many, many conversations about this in anticipation of the question. We've talked about it, meaning the staff and I. And we, we wonder if it just may be more helpful to our community and to not have any misunderstanding that the actual title be changed to Director of Family Engagement and School Climate. And as you know, school climate, or you may know, school climate is actually, there's a lot of legislation around that. There's a lot of have-tos and a lot of mandates around that. And to your point about not wanting to lose federal funding, while there's been nothing that would indicate that we would lose our title grants, we also have to make sure that we are in compliance with whatever the current federal law is. We need to be in compliance. So, these are just some examples that people may not realize that this position does. And if that position were not to be there, the work would still need to happen. So, serve as Title IX decision-maker for Title IX complaints involving students, ensuring compliance with federal regulations and district policies. Assist the Assistant Superintendent with investigating and responding to complaints of discrimination and harassment and according with the district's non-discrimination policy. These are all mandates. Assist with the coordination of district responses to complaints filed with the Office for Civil Rights or the Connecticut Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities. Again, have-tos. Oversee the development and implementation of the state-mandated Increasing Educator Diversity Plan. This position manages the Open Choice Academic, Social, and Support and Educational Enhancement and Acceptance Rate Grants associated with the Choice Program, so there's oversight of those funds. Develop and oversee strategies to reduce chronic absenteeism, engaging families and community partners to address barriers. Collaborate with the Special Education Department to address disproportionality in student identification. That is a report that we have to make to the state, and the state will come back with corrective errors, corrective actions that we would need to do. Certainly, that position attends its local and regional educator recruitment fairs, which is essential when you have a teacher shortage, to be out there. All the districts, we're all competing for a limited number of teachers right now. We partner with a district leadership to create effective onboarding programs and supervise the family engagement specialists that are at the school level to coordinate family outreach. Certainly, this position implements initiatives within the Board of Education's strategic plan and co-leads the district's Equity Council comprised of teachers, administrators, and students. Serves as a member of the required District School Climate Committee. Serve as a point of contact for the Regional School Choice Office and Capital Region Education Council. Serve as a district representative to the South Windsor Juvenile Review Board in partnership with South Windsor PD and South Windsor Youth and Family Services. And certainly, the list goes on. There's, there's much more to the work. But I thought what might be most helpful to your question are sort of the, the work that is the have-tos, the requirements, the things, the work that has to be done. Certainly, there are other things that we've, that we value, that we want this position to support. For example, elevating student voice and getting students engaged in discourse with the school. So, if, if, if for any reason, this, the title of this position would be misleading to the community or would jeopardize the really important work that that position does, I can tell you that our, our objection to changing the title would, would not be strong because what's important to us is that the work gets done and that we support students and families. It's less about the titles and words for us, which I know is part of a national dialogue that has triggered a lot of people to react. So, I, I hope that's helpful to you to understand the position. It may be different than what you're seeing, what they're talking about at the federal level, but certainly at the local level, I, I think it's all things that people in this room would agree are valuable.
Well, that's quite the job description, almost as long as mine. But, so, you mentioned Title IX and whatnot. So, we're keeping our XX and our XY separate. We don't, I could have swore I saw tampons in the boys' room at Orchard Hill. And I'm not sure if I did or not. I didn't see them here at TE, which would make more sense, being the age, but not that they should be in the boys' room to begin with.
Well, I guess my concern right now is that we are veering off the discussion of the budget.
Oh, it doesn't cost any money for that stuff?
Well, I'll tell you, we have raised that concern ourselves to the state in that that's another example of an unfunded mandate, which we were concerned about. And we have, I know I'm changing the subject, but I'm just going to own it. I'm changing the subject. But an example is something that's in our budget that I did not put forth as a potential cut, but it's something I would raise to the board for their consideration. One of the mandates, which I think many people in this room would say is, would be valuable. We have a lot of environmentalists and people who care about those sorts of things. And so, we're required now to do a food waste program. And while that is noble, and we understand why people, that's being promoted. I know the town's very engaged in that because we've met with some town staff. It still represents $50,000 in this budget, which, by the way, is for one school. And the reason we are piloting one school next year was really a financial decision, quite frankly. We said, all right, let's pilot it so that we can see what all the issues will be. Because you can imagine, seven-year-olds with food scraps is not going to be necessarily easy to manage. And we also thought, we're mitigating the impact of when we get hit next year's budget, where we have to have all the schools. And that's a strategy that we've used, particularly when we've rolled out programs. When we rolled out world language at the elementary level, we added it a grade at a time so that it wasn't one big hit in one budget. So, we were trying to mitigate next year's expense for this mandated program by at least having 50 grand in it starting this year, which will smooth out a little bit, not much, but smooth out a little bit next year. The board could decide that our, our efforts to be proactive and to work out the kinks and figure things out, that 50,000 may come out. And then, next year, it'll be there. So, that's a little bit of a, of a cliff. It'll be there, and it will be required. So, that's an example of a well-intended mandate, but an unfunded one that does cost money.
Okay. Yeah, a little bit off-subject there, I guess. Where was I going next? No. I guess my next question was about... There it is. Page 40? It's kind of blended together, so I was wondering if you could break it out for me? What we're spending in what I believe is multilingual learners? I'm assuming that's students that don't speak English? Yeah, we've got it mixed in with our Spanish and French and Latin and whatever other languages that we're teaching nowadays.
Yes. The reason why world languages and the multilingual learners are combined is simply because it's the same budget owner, the same administrator responsible for both programs develops these budgets. But you are correct to point out that those are two separate things. Our world language instruction is what many of you know and maybe remember, teaching other languages in our schools, including one of, one of our important initiatives that came on several years ago, which is to start down at the elementary level. This year, we now have our first freshman who started, who, our first freshman class who's been through the program through their elementary experience. And is it tomorrow night? I think tomorrow night. Wow, there's lots of previews for tomorrow night. Tomorrow night, there will be a presentation on world languages. And I believe they're showcasing students who are as our, our first cohort to come through to the high school that actually experienced elementary instruction in world language. And multilingual, you are correct. We have a, a fast-growing multilingual population. Again, a requirement to provide services. We, in our DURG, we have the highest percentage of multilingual learners. In the other 20 districts, we often get compared to. And there are definitely costs that go along with those required programs to help our students that are multi-language learners.
So, what percentage of this would you say is going towards the multilingual program as opposed to just the regular world languages?
We could sort that out, given enough time. That would not be hard for Chris to sort out which staff is associated with which program.
I was just concerned because I see $3.6 million going towards that when we're only spending 4.5 on literacy, which I have to assume is English class.
Well, two things. One, I do think we could, we could get an answer to you about the, which is how many are multilingual FTEs and how many are world language FTEs? So, that we can do. And then, you- And then your second question about literacy, literacy would include what you just alluded to, like a traditional high school English class, but it also includes a lot of the literacy initiatives. It includes literacy coaches, literacy intervention work with students. So, it's more than just what, what we might call English class, you know, at the high school. And, you know, that was one of the cuts. I know there was a question about that at our, at our meeting on the third. We did, in order to keep this 597 as, as low as we could, we did defer the purchase of some literacy materials that are associated with a mandate. We will need to get there, but the, just to be candid, we, my staff had differing opinions about the quality of the literacy products that they were piloting. There's, there's several that districts can choose from. And my feeling was that in light of all the other demands, I wasn't going to bring forward what could be almost a half million dollars in purchasing materials until I have full consensus that our experts, and I'm not one of them, are literacy experts down on the ground in the schools until there's greater consensus on what's going to be in the best interests of our teaching and learning. So, that's a deferred cost that you'll see in the future, but in my mind, I did not have enough assurance to be spending that kind of money without having more assurance amongst our experts that yes, these are the programs that we think we should go with.
Okay. Now, back to the multilingual, I keep losing it, the multiling- the students that don't speak English. I'm just curious where they're coming from. I'm no expert on immigration visas or whatnot, but my understanding is that someone that gets an H or a B-type visa wouldn't necessarily acquire that because it's mandatory that both the parents and the children speak English before they come here. Now, I know there's also something called an asylum visa, who, those are people that came across the border illegally or overstayed some other kind of visa, and they're pending some sort of court application. Now, they don't necessarily speak English, but then again, they're also not citizens or here legally, so.
I guess what I would invite you to do is to watch the board meeting tomorrow night. The person in charge of our multilingual program will be talking about our students and the languages that they speak. It is, I forget the number, but it's a pretty high number of languages that are spoken in South Windsor in homes. And I do want to just correct that multilingual does not necessarily mean that a student doesn't speak English. It means that they haven't met the proficiency standard. And what we do is we provide services that are required, and students will exit. So, as their skills get developed, they will then qualify to exit the program. We are required to do testing through, again, state-level requirement. We must do assessments, and depending on certain indicators would require that we provide those services. Then, as the student progresses, he or she may exit the program because they've met the standard. But many of these students are, are truly multilingual, meaning they do speak some English, but they need to work on their proficiency in that language.
I had a couple more types of visas here. I did a little research on this with Mr. Patel. So, I was just, like I said, I was concerned where they're coming from, and I will watch that tomorrow night. I do have another meeting, so I'll have to watch it recorded. Is that Mrs. Sussfish? Is she in charge of the?
I think you might be referring to one of our teachers who's a multilingual teacher. The presentation will be by Mrs. Karen Stoy, who is, or Dr. Karen Stoy, I think I should say. She is the administrator for world languages and multilingual students. And so, I believe her focus is on world languages, but she certainly is very skilled, and, and I could mention to her that there's an interest in just knowing a little bit more about the languages that are spoken in our schools.
Okay. I guess that just brings me back to the state mandate question I asked last year. So what? What if we don't listen to the mandates? What's, what's the penalty?
Well, I guess we might be a little closer to knowing the answer this year than we are last year since I'm taking some risks about perhaps not moving forward with the food scraps as quickly as we should. I'm certainly not meeting the timeline for the mandates in literacy. I, I think it depends on the mandate in terms of what can be done, so it's hard to just give a hard and fast rule. I can tell you that there are some requirements from the state that are tracked more closely than others. You know, one of the things that is on the horizon that we haven't talked much about, which is a huge expense to school districts, is the requirement in the mandated legislation around indoor air quality. Now, I don't think anybody in here would argue that we want to have indoor air quality and, and check on those things, but the costs associated with it are staggering. And one of our questions is what do districts do if they don't have the funding to accomplish those goals, which are quite expensive? And in fact, the, the feedback that superintendents across the state gave initially with this language is that it would actually, the requirements for testing, this is just requirements for assessing, not actually doing anything or fixing anything, are, are so involved that there just aren't enough HVAC professionals out there for all school districts to be addressing this matter. It's great news for our HVAC professionals, and we love our HVAC professionals that are a part of our team, but the private companies, there's just not even enough people out there to meet the legislation. So, sometimes, to, maybe in a, a more general way, there are mandates, but even it's unrealistic on, on the legislatures that pass the legislation as to whether we could really, all school districts adhere to it. So, I can't tell you hard and fast if we break this rule, this is the consequence. There's a lot, there's a lot of rules, and I would suspect that it's a varying degrees of oversight by the state.
All right. I think you've answered most of my questions. The only other thing, like I said, I was concerned about the fact that we're still calling it something even close to DEI. I just really would appreciate that to be changed if it can be. I mean, they even have a website to report instances of DEI called NDEI.edu.gov to make sure that everybody is complying with not hiring based on race, religion, or anything else, based on, we should be hiring based on merit and making sure that people are hired that way. I understand that we have a number of unions in town, and all those unions, I don't want to get too much into it, but you also do know I work for an HVAC company, right?
Maybe you can help us out.
We'll see. Thanks.
Counselor Pendleton, you had your light on earlier?
No, I'm fine, thank you. Go ahead.
And Counselor Carey, you had your light on again before?
I was gonna clarify for a break. I was gonna clarify on the H1. Just on the H1, the, the person you hire has to speak, you know, English, but I would, but you, they can bring their family once they get the H1, and there's no requirement that the family. But, I mean, most pe- many people are coming from countries where they're learning English, but I think what you run into is, it's just like if I attempted, well, when I was in France...
Point of order, please.
But, sorry.
Visa conversation, it's not the budget.
Well, anyway.
Thank you. I was just trying to... No, it's just a point of order on the visa conversation. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Carter, for your presentation and everyone else who spoke. I, I know we talked about this last year when you brought up the, the food waste, and I, I had asked you, well, can the residents use whatever comes of it, right? Or can we sell it as a town and, and benefit from it? And your answer was no. And we were kind of curious as to like, who's benefiting from it? You know, if we're, if we're on the hook financially, again, I agree with you 100%. I have a big old garden in my backyard, and I have my own chickens. I think it's great, but if we're on the hook financially and we're not benefiting from it, you know, who is? I would love to approach the state with these mandates and sort of challenge them because, and I, I do want to comment on what you said, Mr. Zimmerman. You know, $100 to me with, I just had my third, third child, I can't even, I can't even fill up a shelf on my refrigerator for $100. So, for me, that $100 is, is everything. And I, I appreciate what you said, and I understand the, the picture you're trying to paint, but there's other people in this town, in this nation, that $100 is quite a bit. So, have you gotten any further detail as to who's benefiting from this food waste program?
So, specific to that question, I, I'm trying to rack my brain and see who does benefit from that. I think, you know, financially, I should say. I think, all I can say is I, I believe it's a, it's an environmental, you know, conservation. It, it helps with less trash, it helps with less, less landfills. I'm not exactly sure, I haven't followed the money, sort of say. I know, and I, I can't speak to this, but I know we met with some of the town folks, and they do have a program that's a little bit different than ours because we are, again, required to, to follow some of the mandates. And perhaps, you know, the, the town program could take somebody's personal waste. I think that that's what, perhaps they're looking into, but I'm sorry, I don't have an answer directly for the financial component.
Yeah, I just, I find that a bit frustrating on your guys' part is, you know, they should be explaining this to you when they're mandating your staff to, I go in and have lunch with my daughters every couple weeks, and there's no way kindergarten up to second or third grade, they're, they're going to be able to pull that off in the elementary school. It's just, it's hard enough to have them throw it in the garbage, these kids. So, to me, I would love to even approach the state and ask to push back on them, well, who's, who's benefiting from this program? You know, it's environmentally, environmentally friendly, great, but, you know, compost is pretty, pretty valuable, and the folks that sell it make a good amount of money. So, it sounds to me that somebody's benefiting from this off of our labor and our finances to essentially get free compost for, for them to sell. And I guess there's some other mandates out there as well. You listed, I think, a couple million dollars worth last year coming up in the pipeline. I, I don't know if there's a way for us to approach the state collectively or people from the town that might want to approach the state, because, you know, if we're trying to save our taxpayers money, and then on top of, you know, I know you don't want to say cuts, let's say deferrals, on top of deferrals that we have to strategically think of, well, now we're also having to navigate around, you know, hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, of state mandates coming down that you guys can't even explain who it's benefiting, right? So, yeah, it's benefiting us not having as much trash. The HVAC things benef- I think we have great air, hopefully, in our schools. But I, I'd love a little bit more explanation, and I don't expect you guys to be the ones to give us that info. So, it's, it's frustrating to me that the state's not backing that up with a clear, concise plan as to, you know, who this is going to. So, let me know how I can be a resource or maybe how we can approach them together because I think it would be a better pill to swallow for the folks that, again, are sacrificing $100 or $1,000 a month on their, on their taxes. Thank you.
Just in response, I would say, you know, we have obviously Representative Del Nicky and Senator Inwar who can be very helpful with getting information at the state level. And I also think they could be helpful, as you are likely aware, there's another open session right now, and I would, I'm going to imagine that there's a lot more things that are going to get passed that would be in the category of what you just described. So, it's every time there's new legislation, there are more and more burdens on the school system, some of them very noble, but some of them very cumbersome. What I've heard, and, and I am not following every single law that's being proposed right now, but I have heard that there is very heavy on emphasis on schools' reporting. And some of it is reporting that is redundant, that we report a million ways, and now we're going to have to report about it in a million and one ways. And people may think that's a cost-free legislation, but when you have to do significant reporting, it costs staff. I think people would be pretty surprised if they knew how much paperwork, paperwork that a school, any school district, not just South Windsor, undergoes in the staffing levels that are required just to maintain that paperwork and those mandated reports. And from what I've heard, there are more on the way. I know that different organizations representing schools are trying to push back and say it's redundant, and it puts another burden on, on districts, and it either requires more staff or it takes time away from other things that many people would rather have us focused on. But I think certainly, speaking with our delegation and understanding what might be coming, coming when, when it closes in June may be helpful to your thinking as well.
Counselor King?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to that point, I've had a preemptive strike, as the mayor well knows, in having our state rep come in and speak specifically to the town council, as well as the senator to speak to the town council about what they are doing, not so much on behalf of themselves, but on behalf of the town. And so, that is part of the plan, so that we don't have to go to them. They got elected, they should be coming to us and telling us exactly what's supposed to be happening. So, the mayor and I have had conversations about that, so that'll be forthcoming just for our people outside.
I was just hoping to, for budget purposes and my own understanding of this, Counselor Bellboni, when you say, "Where are they coming from?", my question is, what exactly do you mean by "where are they coming from"? I say, I'm asking, what I'm assuming what you mean is, American citizens, as a teacher myself who has, you know, multiple students who may speak Spanish or speak English or both, and many times it is both, but as you know, you know, somebody who may be born as an American citizen may not speak perfect English to start, but as a teacher, it's our job to, to help them. So, I just, I guess I'm wondering, can you clarify what you meant by "where are they coming from?" And how that can, has anything to do with our, with our budget?
Certainly. I'm certainly not talking about American citizens, obviously. I'm talking about what kind of visa, how they are in this country, are they here legally? Are they here illegally? Are we spending money on children that should not be here? That's pretty much it. Very simple, very straightforward.
Okay, I'm glad I asked that because I don't, in my opinion, it did not come across as that way, or that's at least...
My apologies if I wasn't clear.
And just as a teacher who has many students who fit into this category, it's a very important and very, for these kids, in order for them to, to thrive in our schools, they need classes like their multi-language learning teachers in order for them to learn health, PE, in, whatever it might be. So, I'm glad that I asked it so I could clarify that. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zimmerman?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Del Nicky. I, I gotta give Dr. Carter credit for her response, but I, I guess, you know, at board meetings, we don't usually respond to the public, and sometimes it's difficult. But I don't want to leave a few of the comments out there without, like, some response. And I'm not exactly sure what this has to do with the budget, but just, just a couple things. I mean, I'll, I'll take the bait. Nobody in our school system's being indoctrinated. Federal initiatives aside, I'm fine with the words diversity, equity, and inclusion. I worry about having public discussions about not following state mandates. I'm not exactly sure what we're doing. And, you know, hopefully, we can get back to, in my opinion, why we're supposed to be here, because I'm not sure, I'm not sure this is, I'm not sure the discussion's worthy of this room and this, the group of people that's here. Just my personal opinion.
Is there anyone else that has further questions, comments? Counselor Pendleton?
Oh, thank you. Oh, Mr. King can go before me?
Nope. You already, he already spoke, so I'm going in order.
Okay. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say thank you, Dr. Carter, for taking the budget initially from 10-point-something down to 5-point-something. So, thank you very much for your hard work on that and figuring out how you can do that. And thank you to the Board of Ed for accepting Dr. Carter's budget and making this your budget at this present time. I have, I, looking over this budget, and I know there's some concerns, and I'm reading the guides, the guidelines, I'm reading the guidelines on page seven. And complying with federal and state education mandates, maintain a safe, clean learning environments for all students. So, what was mentioned earlier this evening with removing those would not meet these guidelines. These are guidelines, I understand, they're not mandates, they're not rules, they're not its guidelines, I understand that, with flexibility. What I'm concerned with is where we were last year and everybody used the word "kick the can" down the road and what happened last year, what we need to do, what, where we were going to be this year in last year's conversation. We all know that times are tough. We get it. Times are tough for a lot of folks. Not knowing where we're going to be next year, not knowing, it's only going to progressively get worse. So, if we start now, progressively get worse in the fact of economics or in the fact of needs or increases, mandated increases with contractual, what have you, whatever you need, it's going to be there. It's going to be there just like it was last year. It's here this year. And a statement was made by Counselor Carey that stated, "We're targeting to reduce the budget." Who's targeting to reduce the budget? Counselor Carey, please. And I'll add my second question to that. And which budget is being targeted to be reduced? I don't understand.
We're not trying to reduce the budget, we're trying to reduce the increase to the budget. And that's the Budget Committee. So, we haven't made our proposals to Town Council yet, but as a Budget Committee, we are looking to reduce the size of the increases.
Okay. So, I'm a little slow sometimes, I admit it. So, the size of the increase, which is clearly in this budget book from Dr. Carter, the increase is minimized from 10-point-something down to 5-point-something, but getting us to a point of harm and irresponsibility if we go any farther with the reductions. What she's saying that we need for an increase is because it's necessary. So, targeting that would be removing and insulting to her intelligence that she has done year after year after year, which I give absolute credit to. And I give absolute credit to this Board of Education who sat here and listened to her and they made some cuts that were very, very difficult to be able to target a Board of Ed or even the town side. And reductions on the town side bothered me with three part-time people. You've got six arms and six legs and three extra bodies. I don't know why you'd want to get rid of them. But I'm just saying, to target, to reduce the increase when it's justified because of enrollment, it's justified. I don't know, and I'm going to say this, and I'm going to say this, and I'm going to maybe regret it later, but I'm going to say this. Republicans have always went after what they want, no matter what cost, to who or where, no matter the cost. Unfortunately, you're not looking at the town as a whole, as a whole. And it's unfortunate when you have someone saying, "We need this and this is the cost of our increase. We need this." This is, there have been items in here that have been reduced that were needed. Priorities, Dr. Carter, that you reduced, that you would think on your list is a priority that would be wonderful to have back into the budget? Just throw me one. Anyone? Anyone that you reduced?
Well, there is a slide in the budget presentation that outlines all of the FTEs that were deferred. So, there's about $1.3 million worth of positions on that slide. So, almost any one of them would be in response to your question.
Okay, thank you. So, I love that word deferred. That's the next year's project, right? That's the next year is deferring it to next year, right? I can't tell you how many times you've said that this year. Last year, you used the word deferred also. And so, what we deferred last year, did we pick up on it on this year?
I guess I'll just speak more generally to the concept of deferring. We're in a unique situation in that when, because of our enrollment is cumulative, ongoing, sustaining, and is going to continue for the future, the problem with deferring under those conditions is that you're just stacking them up. There are times when we have had to tighten our belt or, you know, have something be reduced because it was a one-time situation in response to, say, you know, there could be, I'll make it up, a town could undergo some sort of a natural disaster and everyone has to find a way and it's a one-time problem. The way that our enrollment problem plays out is that it's just cumulative and there's a lag time for the feel of the impact of it, which is why I think sometimes people want to look at, well, how many kids did you have last year? How many kids this year? So, why would we, you know, have this kind of increase? It's a perfectly fine question. It's because enrollment is cumulative and sustained over a period of time, which is different than a one-time problem. Sometimes there's been a one-time problem that we have to find the funds for to address. And I'm just going to make a statement and I'm, I please don't take this the wrong way because I really appreciate what you're trying to do right now and that you're supporting our budget and you're championing our schools. That being said, I just feel strongly that I want people to know that when we have a budget discussion, I am not insulted when you ask questions and I am not insulted if you come to a different opinion than I do. My job is not so much to have opinions, but to have facts and provide them to the decision-makers. So, I do not take it personally or I do not feel insulted when we have a conversation. There have been some statements tonight that I personally don't agree with, but I am setting those aside. But I, when it comes to the budget conversation tonight, I just want to clarify that that is not how I feel, but I appreciate why you said it, Mrs. Pendleton.
Thank you. Understanding the deferred part and the cumulative of the students, I get that now. And it's just going to increase. It's just continuing over the next few years. I don't recall the number, 900-something more students, would it be?
So, I think the 900 you're referring to is, we did a 10-year look back from 2014 to 2025 and we grew by 969 students during that time period. There's some really interesting slides that are comparative that I think are really important to have context. There were, out of the Derby towns, I think the average increase among just those few that increased over that time period, the average was 152. We were 969. The remaining districts all decreased with an average of losing 372 students and it was quite a range between the remainder of those towns. So, I think that's the 900 number that you're referring to. I don't have them exactly in front of me, but we certainly have several, like in the 200s increase still for TE to feel and we're about 400 students more that the high school will have to absorb. And that is, that's why I'm sharing, if our enrollment was going to stop or start going down next year, I think a lot of us would feel better about where this is going. But this is why I've been so emphatic about just trying to forewarn the cost of deferring. And I say it because several years from now, there may be different players here and people may say, "Well, why didn't you warn us?" And part of what I do in these meetings is put on public record what my, you know, what I'm advising our decision-makers to do. So, I just want to make sure that people understand the impact of deferring. If next year was our final year of growth and we were going to start seeing some reprieve, I would have a different approach, but it's going to sustain. So, it's something that we have to consider in terms of, how do we balance the constraints that have been discussed tonight, but how do we balance making sure that we're also thinking of the taxpayer so that we don't create spikes? I think a lot of this conversation and everyone in this room, I'm sure, felt it, but revale was hard on a lot of folks. And, you know, one of the things that I'm thinking about is the importance of having sustained budgets that attempt to keep pace so that we're not on a collision course with the next revale and we haven't kept pace with the operating budget. So, that's what I'm just trying to be forward-thinking about, what can we do that balances keeping it as low as possible, but not stacking so much up that future decision-makers and future taxpayers are left sort of with this huge spike. So, that's really what my advocacy is about tonight.
Dr. Carter, with the, you had mentioned the revale. Mr. Maniscalco, when is that going to happen? Three more years? Two more years?
I think we have three more years at the most at this moment. Twenty-seven? Twenty-seven. It's every five years, so.
Yeah. Okay. And I know it was discussed in the past also to balance out the budget, to have a steady same number, not a spike, not a dip, not a spike, not a dip, not a, because we don't know what's coming in the future, we don't know how many more students are coming, we don't know any of that. So, to maintain a number that can be, let's say, a 5% over X amount of years to go forward would maintain us to where we don't have a spike, where we don't have a dip, and so on and so forth. I know that was discussed in the past. And when, I want to clarify something about the insulting part. I think it's extremely insulting on the fact that your staff and you have worked so difficultly and challenging with this budget. That's where I find it insulting to look at your budget in even, in an inkling of reducing it because you have already done a fantastic job on that and that's what I was referring to. Thank you.
Counselor King?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, my question is probably a little bit closer to home and hopefully you guys will have the information for me on this. How many counselors would you say that we have in every school or even on a per-student basis?
I'm going to have Mr. Sanzo look that up, but while he's looking it up, I can just give you some flavor for this budget. So, the middle school requested two counselors to put their ratio back in line with what would be a typical caseload for a middle school counselor. They actually made the argument and had the data to show that they would actually need two. As has been discussed, there were many things that had merit and that were justifiable that I just did not move forward. That's why we moved one forward in the budget and one is on that page that has the deferred cost. So, you will see a request for a counselor next year for TE because they asked for two and we were just making really hard choices. The high school also asked for an additional counselor and that is in the budget. But the actual number at each school and the ratios, do you have the number maybe?
So, we have, next year we'll have a total of 13 school counselors between the middle school and the high school combined, eight at the high school next year. At the elementary level, there are no school counselors.
Thank you for that. And I see the number and knowing if you had your druthers, obviously you would have more counselors. Can you please define for me the difference between a school counselor and a behavioral specialist?
Sure.
And the impact that each one of those has on our individual students?
Sure. So, school counselors are the traditional counselors that you think of when you hear a school counselor or many of us grew up hearing them referred to as guidance counselors. And those are certified staff members. So, those are certified staff members that are considered part of the teacher's bargaining unit. Behavior specialist is a fairly newer position that we have been bringing into our schools and that's a non-certified staff member. We have discovered that there are a lot of really great folks out there that aren't certified that can really have a big impact on kids. And to be clear, our non-certified staff generally have lower wages than certified staff. So, it is a more cost-effective way of reaching kids with different personnel that we might not employ otherwise if it was in the certified bargaining unit. And the behavior specialist is really designed to intervene, to support, so that certain behaviors that maybe without it would rise to an assistant principal or so on or that these are positions that can be more responsive to intervene on behaviors. We certainly, it's no secret that we're seeing, like all school districts, an increased number of dysregulation in behaviors. And so, that's why you see the requests in this budget because it's just one more approach that we're taking to try to meet student needs. It happens to be a more cost-effective approach, but it also allows folks who aren't certified to be a part of our school community and have a lot of value and skills to offer.
Awesome. Thank you. And finally, and just to be on the same page with you, Mike, when you're talking about, Ganski, excuse me, transparency, you brought that up a couple of times. I just want to make sure that everybody understands what you mean in terms of transparency when you're talking about what you're looking for. We've had a conversation, I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of what you're looking for when you're talking about full transparency as far as numbers or what have you.
Well, it's just, some of the questions I asked earlier, just wanted, you know, think of it almost in terms of, you know, an Excel spreadsheet where you've got the line item, but you've got all the data behind it. I just want more description behind the data. Maybe it makes perfect sense, it's rational and there's a perfectly good argument for all of it, but when you just have a number and no individual data behind it, it's hard to comprehend and it just becomes a number and a percentage based on the prior year and that's all you're looking at. I just, I just want, the devil's in the details, right? So, the more we know, you know, I think the clearer the picture becomes. And candidly, if the budget request is, you know, that's where it needs to be and the data is there, broken out in its finite detail, it makes it easier for everyone to understand and digest, even if it's not the prettiest picture in terms of tax increase or whatever else. I think that's where, you know, some, you know, I look at this budget compared to, say, Mr. Maniscalco's budget, which is literally a three-inch binder and every dollar is broken down and accounted for across every department. And this one, it's pretty, doesn't tell me a lot. The pictures are distracting, the data is where it is, it bounces around and there's not a lot of substance behind it, so it's hard for me to really fully understand. And I'm a numbers guy and the more data I have, the more I can argue for or against a position, right? So, that's where I'm transparent. I just want, I want more data. That's what I just think. It just means just distributing that level of detail.
Thank you for saying that. To that end, and I brought this up the last time that we had a meeting, I think that would truly benefit the Board of Ed is, the pictures are awesome, but the stories. For example, when you had the young man come that was on Shark Tank, that's a story that everyone, including our students, can say, "I want to be that guy." And I don't know, but like his picture and the students that were going butt crazy about it, you can make an argument, if we had more STEM, then we'd have more of these representatives. Or, for example, we have a number of students who have gone on in sports and they represent South Windsor. That's a great storyline in terms of this person is now up at UConn, whatever, and Yale or what have you, whatever school, and they would not have been successful had they not, just for haha's sake, had that multilingual teaching. Then you can say, "This is what happens when you give money for this, this is what you get back." This student may not have gotten that 100% scholarship had they not had this that we put in our budget," to your point. And sometimes I think, and I am a numbers kind of guy, but I'm also a story guy and I know the impact of having a daughter who's now doing very well and now having a son, praise the Lord, who's also doing very well in our high school. And it's because of the counselors, it's because of the behavioral, it's because of those different language teachers. We have a very strong French teacher who's amazing, you know, lets me know when he's acting up and not. But you- But you need those individuals, and I think those types of storylines, especially when you're advocating for your teachers, when you're cutting back or have to cut back, that I think that our community also needs to be aware of. So, that's just a side to what Counsel Boganski was saying in terms of, he needs the numbers, I agree. I need the stories, because I think that people will reflect on the stories and say, "Oh, my gosh, that's right."
I appreciate that suggestion, and I really would encourage folks who are looking for their stories. At every board meeting, like you mentioned Shark Tank, we have a student spotlight, and that is to highlight these very stories that you're alluding to. And as for the budget book, you know, I do try to strike a balance. The pictures, they're just student artwork. You know, that's all they are, and we're just trying to, it's very exciting for kids when they get their picture in the book. And it's also to showcase that the arts is a part of what we do and to celebrate our young student artists. So, I will defend our young student artists that their pictures are not distracting. But I also, but we do try to strike a balance. I mean, there's lots of storytelling we could do, but I understand, at the end of the day, this is a business conversation about finances and money, and that's why it's not overly storytelling in this particular document. I respectfully disagree that there's not a lot of information in this book. There is a lot of information. There are a lot of numbers. And for every page, for every, where you see multiple percentages up or down, there is an explanation for every item that is either up or down in any kind of significant way. And I really encourage counselors to read those budget notes, because they really will tell a story, if you would, maybe not as exciting as Shark Tank, but it tells a story about why something may be up or down. And I do feel that we provide a very transparent budget document for the community, for decision-makers. I do think there is a point where it can be completely in the weeds, which, you know, we've, I've heard you say that that's not something you want to do either. So, I just feel that for anyone who's hearing this conversation, I would encourage them to look at this document and look at the hundred pages or so of numbers and the explanations of why any particular line would be up or down. It's pretty broken down in a way that we're trying to make it digestible for anyone reading this book. And certainly, council members know that, not even in just this meeting, but if anybody ever had a question that they're wondering about, we certainly are very responsive to answering those questions.
Deputy Mayor Syracuse, we had your light on. All set? Counselor Lewis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not a numbers guy, not at all. And transparency for me to say, this is, it's a lot. It's very overwhelming between the town budget, the Board of Ed budget. A lot of praise to you and your staff for all that you've done. I echo Counsel Pendleton's comments of how you took your big budget, you narrowed it down, and thank you for that work and effort. We're also thinking of that word deferment, and, you know, things in town that are being deferred are, you know, we have coming up possibly in November, fields and lights. And that's going to affect things a lot. We also have parks and rec. It's not, it's a big picture, and it's daunting to think at some point, there's got to be breaks somewhere. We don't know where those are, what the best way to put on the brakes are. But we've got to ask the questions, and hopefully, I appreciate that you said that it's a business decision, you don't take things personally. I know that, you know that I respect you a great deal with the work that you've done and how willing you've been to have conversations whenever I had questions. There's just a lot going on, and the money, if money were no object, I'd want to give you more. But money isn't object, so we've got to wrestle together, not as Democrats, not as Republicans, not as Board of Ed, not as council, but as a community of town representatives. We need to figure this out. That's something that our citizens can live with. And there's not one quick, it's not one quick answer, though, "They're wrong, I'm right." It's got to be a we thing. And it's unfortunate that personalities and politics get involved, which is sad, but I have a great deal of respect for the experience and information and knowledge that's in this room. And I think we've got to figure out a way to make it work. Thanks.
Is there anything further? Anybody have? Mr. Prano?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a couple of comments. Dr. Carter, thank you. And actually, on a side note, I speak here today as a direct beneficiary of the elementary multilingual educational system. And I am a proud member of this community, and I love this country. And in order for me to have gotten that, gotten there, I needed to read about it, learn about it, and speak about it. And the elementary multilingual education system did that for me. So, I am a very, very strong proponent of that. Thank you. In regards to the items that you talked about, some of the reduction suggestions, and, you know, some of these, some of these items, like the pension deferral, you know, we were, as you mentioned, we're, you know, our town's been very good stewards of that, and, you know, it's something that can, you know, could potentially be deferred. And, you know, not ideally, but okay. And same thing for the healthcare reserve, not ideal. Worrisome is the, any special ed deferments, because as we very well know, special ed expenditures can swing in any direction, and they can go in our favor, or they can very much go against our, against our bottom line. And so, I would just, you know, ask the Budget Committee, as you're working on this budget and continuing to figure out the numbers, I know you're, you know, that's some work that's in progress still, that if we have any additional numbers, any additional revenue, I know the motor vehicle revenue is something that is changing as we speak, that we keep in mind some of these very, very important items that Dr. Carter suggested as possible reductions, and that can really negatively impact our bottom line and our, in our budget. And that, you know, if additional revenues are, have come into play, that we keep in mind these items, that we not put that strain on the, on the system. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Carey, you had your light on.
So, you know, listening to what we talked about as far as the state mandates, I'd really like to put a work group together to see what we can do, and not just talking to our representative and senator, but maybe, you know, sending communications to Governor Lamont. Many years ago, when I was in college, we did that in the state of New Jersey, and I happened to intern there when they did it. And they were very effective at stopping these mandate, unfunded mandates. And Pennsylvania has been pretty effective at it too. So, really like to put some pressure. Supposedly Connecticut's in good shape right now. I think maybe the state has to stop having unfunded mandates, and maybe we can put a little pressure. Our urge our citizens, our residents, you know, send an email. The email's fast. You know, let's communicate that this is causing us problems. So, just an idea.
Okay. Anything further? Questions? Mrs. Corsi?
Thank you. I just would like to point out that the beginning of the budget season and every year that Dr. Carter presents a budget, she's very clear that she is presenting us a budget that is kind of the bare minimum of what we can defend and of what is going to maintain our school system that supports all of our students and our community. So, the talks of this continued deferment, and we're kicking the can down the road, it feels like we're kind of punting, kind of like my New England Patriots, we're punting a lot. And it's just, it's not, it's not sustainable year after year. And so, I worry, you know, given that the budget that was presented is the budget that is what we needed. To Dr. Carter's credit, the fact that she was able to find a couple of potential spots where, yes, maybe we can again defer, that maybe the taxpayers aren't going to feel, maybe the school system isn't going to feel, the students thankfully, the teachers thankfully. But it's, again, it's pushing these needs, because they wouldn't be in our budget if they were not absolutely needed, down to the next year, to the next year. And we have this list of deferred staff members that we need also, and we have this list of, I mean, we're not even going to get to the aspirational list, like that we're talking 10, 15 years at this point. So, I just want to say that it is extremely concerning that there's potential numbers, $1.3 million from this. I just, I can't, excuse me, I can't imagine the ripple effects that we're going to feel year after year after year, when we know what our needs are, we know what our needs are this year. And again, that ripple effect of how this is going to affect not just the schools, but our entire community. I also just wanted to make a comment that for the students that are in our school district, regardless of your chromosomes, or your gender expression, or your parents' visa status, your sexuality, your race, what language you speak at home, you belong here, and you deserve a high-quality education, just like every single one of our students in our district. Thank you.
Any further questions, comments? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Dr. Carter, a quick question. I do trust your professional opinion. I do think you're an extremely intelligent woman, and I'm happy to have you here in town. How long, in your opinion, do you think we have been, let's say, deferring or kicking the can down the road? I believe I asked you this question last year. But how long would you say? Because I think it is time to figure out a solution to not only end that, but also try to figure out how to also give the taxpayers, as we all are, some relief.
Sure. And it was alluded to earlier, and I would be the first to identify it, that for the last two budget cycles, we were in the sevens. And so, it's not to suggest that every year there's been pressure to get down to the bare, bare bones. Those are much higher increases than I've ever proposed. You guys know the slide that I show where in 2014, my proposal was 1.94. And so, the proposals that I make are reflective of the conditions of the time. We have had two years prior to this budget cycle of what would be considered higher-than-normal budget increases. I would really want to go back and look at the finances to figure out, is there a year where I would say that deferral started? What I can tell you is that we are slated to continue growing until 2033. That's as far out as we go. We do, we have plateaued at the elementary level. We're still growing at the middle, and we're still growing at the high school. You know, I want to commend you for wisely bringing up at our, at the last meeting, keep in mind that all of this assumes that we don't have an influx of unexpected large number of students that may come to us through some high-density housing proposals. And you, you know, caution folks to be paying attention to it. And the reason why I'm concerned is that, and we haven't talked a lot about it tonight, but besides just the operating budget, we have a facilities responsibility to make sure our kids are safe, and there's roofs over their head, and we've got room for them in our classrooms. And as you know, we're full. And so, I am very worried, and I was very glad that you raised it. And again, it's unusual. I've been here a long time. I've never talked about housing. I've always felt that really wasn't my lane, and it wasn't appropriate for me to weigh in. But at this point, I would be not doing my job if I did not sound the alarms to say I'm very concerned about facilities. And it really is a testament, as I've said before, to particularly our facility staff, but our IT staff, and all the folks in our buildings, the teachers, the custodians, the paraprofessionals, the office staff, all of those folks are doing incredible things to avoid coming to you with a large ask. If we were to build a fifth elementary school because a housing unit came in and generated hundreds of kids, you're talking another elementary school. That kind of investment is a significant, that we're worrying about 597. I'm worried that we're not worried about some really big numbers that could hit us just based on enrollment. And so, we are doing many, many, many creative things to avoid that, to hold that off. So, I hope that that is understood and considered, that where we're pushing to try to keep pace with operating, we're doing a whole lot to try to not ask for a facilities work. But you were, you were wise to raise it, because I'm not sure it's on everybody's radar. And we're just in a unique situation. As you know, I've talked at the state level about our unique situation and why potential moratoriums on requirements would be useful for South Windsor. And the obvious answer will be, well, if we do it for South Windsor, we have to do it for everyone. My argument would be that there is no school district that could come up with the data that we have to show what an outlier we are. As you know, we did that 10-year look back, and we grew by 23.3%. The next closest to us was 10.6%. And there were only a few of those districts. Everyone else during that time period declined. So, when I say we're an outlier, it's not, I'm not just using that word loosely, it is, it is, we are quite an outlier. And I think it does make a case for us to be looked at by the state differently. Some, I think the natural follow-up question someone may be thinking about is, well, does that mean we'll get more funds from the state? And the other thing, another reason why I'm advising that we keep pace is that, while I said earlier that I couldn't speak to what the, on, they do a wealth ranking, they determine a town's ability to pay, and even if all of us disagreed with that, it is the analysis that South Windsor, in their opinion, has been historically overfunded through ECS, and we will start to lose ECS funds, which a lot, we're not the only district in that position, but the impact is so much more acute when you're the outlier that is grappling with increasing enrollment plus losing funds from other sources, which is why, to the extent that we can, without, with trying to avoid spikes, just to keep the stamina going of making sure that we don't find ourselves with less and less state, more and more students, and we haven't planned, you know, for that dynamic.
I appreciate you saying that, and I guess just to reiterate, so the public knows kind of what you're alluding to, is, you know, there's a proposed project out there that could bring upwards of 700 units into our, into our town, which, again, according to your professional opinion, and I think everyone would agree, would most likely result in another school being necessary. So, I think we, as people, we react too late, right? When things are already passed, when things have already gone through. So, a good example, I would love to explore what you said, Counselor Carey, about some sort of committee, and hopefully we can get residents involved in that. But I think people need to go to these planning and zoning meetings and express your, I mean, I guess you could be for it, but if you're against it, you need to make those folks know that ahead of time, before zone changes happen, before laws get passed, because then it's too late. So, it may seem like these are uncontrollable situations, but I think we can actually control it by getting bodies in these rooms and telling folks that, you know, we can't, we can't handle any more growth in our town. And I think we can do the same thing on the state level. Counselor King, I'm glad that you brought up that, and I'm excited to kind of see those state rep and state senator come to us and listen to us. But I think the town, the town folks need to start using their voice, because it's strong. I know we're heavily swayed when people come in and speak their, at least we should be, when people come in and speak their mind and tell us how they feel. That's our job. Our job is to represent the 27,000 people in South Windsor. And I do appreciate what you said about not being offended. And I do appreciate what you said about not being offended by comments being made, you know, this is a professional platform. You know, our job isn't to represent you as Dr. Kate Carter, the superintendent, it's, our job is to represent you as a resident of South Windsor, which you are. So I, I just hope that people will get more involved and attend more of these meetings and speak the way you feel, because it's our job to listen and put that into action. And if nobody's showing up to these meetings, and some developer comes and says, this is a great idea and great for the town, and they decide to go ahead and pass that, and now, you know, now where are we at financially? We got to provide a school for kids that come into town. So thank you for bringing that up, and this is, this is difficult. You know, I have children in the school, I have senior parents in town, I have a daughter who's in the athletic programs, I'm an outdoorsman, you know, I kind of touch every single thing that this town has to offer. But I also feel the weight of the taxes that I have to pay as well. So this is a difficult thing. I think everybody up here can agree with that. So I appreciate everyone's hard work, and those who support this, those who maybe want to work on it a little bit more, I think everybody's best intentions are there, and I don't think any of us take that lightly. You know, we're sacrificing time away from our families, sometimes our careers, to come here and volunteer, and thank you for all the hard work that was put forward to make this meeting possible and these two budget books possible. Thank you.
Chairwoman, Espin?
Thank you. Just a quick comment. I do have some concerns, especially after hearing some of the conversations in this room tonight, that we are losing sight of what really is a priority of public education, and that's academics. And I just want to make sure, as the local leaders here, that we are continuing to keep our eye on the prize. And it's easy to get distracted by a lot of mandates and by a lot of things that schools are responsible for now. And I just, I think it's important that the people in this room just keep focused on really what our obligation is and, and what we need to do for this town, and that's to keep a rigor with our academics here. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other further comments, questions? Okay. Seeing no further comments or questions, on behalf of myself, the council, I would like to thank Dr. Carter, Ms. Peterson, Mr. Sanzo, Ms. Trimerka, the Board Education Members, Town Manager, Mr. Maniscalco, and the Clerk of the Council, Catherine Sennett, for attending tonight's meeting. I encourage the public to either attend or view the public hearing on Monday, April 7th at 8:00 p.m. This is the Board of Ed Education Public Hearing in Town Council Chambers, to ask any additional questions or seek clarification. And also at 8:30 p.m. is the town budget public hearing as well. Moving on to Item 5, executive session, there is none. Item 6, do we have an adjournment?
No adjournment.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. We are adjourned. Thank you.